In like twenty years.
Yeah.
And then they put a warehouse.
Go fix what's broken there.
Okay. Just chill.
Yeah, it's gonna recover.
Very nice.
This is funny.
Right in the middle of what you mean.
Top speed.
We're live even though.
Mount and sand.
All right.
But I don't know enough. I'm looking for more speed and I'm getting the hedges.
He's got a lot.
Yeah.
Slow down, you know, I mean.
Okay. Say, yeah, I'm not a real daredevil. I like the nice groom slopes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Keep it cautious.
Sweat.
James, what? She's right. Should we scoot down so you can, uh?
Yes, yes, please. Sure, that'd be great, thanks. That feels awkward.
Strap that around, dude. Being an honor.
All right, seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Cornwall on Hudson zoning board of appeals, meeting of February eighth, two thousand twenty-four. We have three items on the agenda today. Our first item will be Thirty Avenue A. It's the Calawari. Apologies if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Covered entry porch. The applicant seeks approval of area variances from section one seven two dash eight C one of the village zoning code to allow for the construction of a covered entry porch on an existing single-family home. The applicants are seeking a variance from section one seven two dash eight C one to allow for a combined side yard setback of thirty-two feet when the code requires thirty-five feet. Would the applicant like to approach? If you just give us a brief introduction to your application.
So, um.
And just state your, your name.
My name's Nicole Calori. My family of five live at Thirty Avenue A. We have three small kids and we have, um, an addition on that side of the house. And the only way to get to the back of the house or to our driveway is to go, you know, all the way through to the back, through the kitchen. And so we were looking for a way to kind of get to our backyard or our, or our driveway from that side area. And, and we would like to have it covered just because kids come home from school and take off shoes and backpacks. And if there's snow or rain, we would just like to have the covered porch right there. And our neighbors, they are good friends of ours and they fully support this project. And they would be the only, only ones to really like see it on a everyday basis. So it meets the side yard variance. It's just that both side yards have to be thirty-five feet. And it would be at thirty-two. So basically just hoping to get the cover, to cover the porch.
Sight coming in here and. Okay, so it's, um, there's no, uh, there's no new enclosed space. It's just the porch?
Just the porch and it would be a cover.
Okay.
Like, so I guess it adds to the roof line.
Is the porch existing now or it's all new?
It's stone, so we didn't have like any, we didn't have wood or anything decking added. So it's just stone. It's already there. I walked by it today.
Oh. So the stair, the stairs are all already there, they're existing.
Yeah.
Just because you're putting the covering.
The cover, yeah.
This is remodeling going on inside.
We will apply for a permit that's gonna, we haven't done anything inside yet. It's just this, yeah, it's just. Sorry for all the tears.
So the covering, it's, it's, uh, two posts or columns and a roof. It's all wood framed, I would imagine.
It's already done.
Gabled roof with roofing to.
All that, all those changes.
Match the rest of the house. Pretty straightforward. Does the board have any questions? Any questions? Motion to open the, um, uh, public hearing. Anyone from, uh, the audience would like to, uh, voice an opinion? Please feel free to do so. Anyone have any concerns?
At all?
Okay. Okay. Uh, well, let's see. Uh, so we need to evaluate any application on five criteria. Uh, the first is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or whether a detriment will be created to nearby properties. Say that since the stairway is already there, is already, uh, it's kind of existing, uh, it's used as a thoroughfare, so it's not really creating any disturbance in the use or, uh, impact to the neighbors. Number two is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Say, again, considering the stairs are pre-existing, uh, covering it does not really alter what's there. It's very straightforward. Whether the requested variance is substantial, uh, you're, you're required to have thirty-five feet. It's now being, uh, cut down to thirty-two feet. I think that's, uh, pretty small deviation from, uh, from the variance. It's not, you're not creating a, a twenty-foot porch over there. It's pretty minor. Whether the variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. I think, you know, the only possible thing it would affect is a sightline if the roof is going to block anyone's, uh, view, but, uh, considering it's on the side of the house, it's not really, uh, much impact. Uh, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, uh, it was self-created, but in light of the other criteria, I think the board chooses not to, uh, put great emphasis on it. So I would make a motion to approve the application as presented.
I'll second it. Do we have a roll call vote?
Okay. I vote to approve it.
Approve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just note for the minutes, uh, no county referral was required and it's a secret type two, so no review is required.
Okay.
The other ones, I don't really understand.
Cups of espresso today. Stairs are already there, huh?
Yeah.
How about? Uh, the next item on the agenda is Sixty-Six Weeks Avenue. The Schultz House. The applicant seeks approval of an area variance from section five-one-seven-two-dash-eight C one of the village zoning code to allow for the construction of an addition to an existing single-family home. The applicants are seeking a variance from, uh, section one, five-one-seven-two-dash-eight C one to allow for a side yard setback of twelve-point-seven feet when the code requires fifteen feet. Someone from the applicant like to present your proposal? Just state your name, address, and, uh, give us a brief introduction.
Hi, I'm Katie and I live at Sixty-Six Weeks.
And I'm Tyler and I'm her husband and we live at Sixty-Six Weeks. So the, uh, the, what we're doing here today is we're, we're, we're building out our house. We moved, moved here about three years ago and we want to make it our forever home and exactly how we want. So we're doing some renovations, which are not part of this, but we're, we're building out our garage, uh, to move our bathroom, uh, and move our washer and dryer. Uh, so we had to move our washer and dryer from downstairs to the garage. Uh, we can't park our car in there, so now we want to move the washer and dryer somewhere else. And so we've decided to build this out and put the washer and dryer in the bathroom in this new addition. So as you can see, it's twelve-point-seven feet, uh, twelve feet, seven inches as opposed to fifteen. Uh, we are extending it from the garage, so we are not moving any closer. Uh, we are going to make it flush and so it looks like it's an extension of the garage, have the same roof, uh, so it'll look and feel exactly like the house that we have right now and the garage that we have now. Uh, and again, we're not moving it any closer. It's just extending it to include and move our washer and dryer.
So we could park our car in there.
Okay. Uh, so just looking at the, uh, on the plan, uh, as you described, it's, uh, the addition is all on the back side of the house. And the side where the garage is, you're maintaining the existing wall line and just extending it back.
Yes.
Right, there's no issue on the, the back, uh, setback, rear setback. Uh, it's just making the existing side setback, existing non-conforming side.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And are you adding? Uh, there's no entrance being added over there. Uh, is there any, uh, hardscape, like a driveway extending back there?
No.
It's just the wall line continues on. It looks like there's a, uh, there's gonna be a new, uh, a new window on that, uh, that side. And it's like there's a porch that's facing towards the, towards the rear.
Towards the rear, yes.
Yeah.
A doorway and a, uh, just stairs, actually.
Just switches the door that was there back that distance.
Yeah.
Okay. The existing door just moves back to the end of the addition.
And just, um, do you have an idea of where your neighbor's home is, uh, on the property next, next door? Yeah, of course.
Okay, so where are we?
This is the wall.
This is the wall. It's right here on this side.
Okay.
Yeah. So we actually have neighbors on this side, this side, and this side. And none in front.
But there is a house.
There is a, yes.
Is it sort of like a similar scenarios?
Yes.
Your, your property where there, you know, not the exact number, but like twenty, around twenty feet from the side property line?
Roughly, I don't know the exact.
Yeah, yeah, just.
What was the question? I didn't hear you.
I'm just trying to figure out where the, uh, the next door neighbor, neighboring house is.
Um, in terms of feet from the property line?
Yeah, I mean, is it just?
It's pretty close to the property line.
It's pretty close, within the range.
It's like similar to your property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, quarter mile down.
No, 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 it's pretty close.
Okay.
Higher.
It's a little higher, yeah. But it's close, yeah.
I would say the, um, the only sort of, uh, practical, um, consideration I would have is, uh, just looking at the topography, the, the land is sloping down towards the rear. Uh, and then along this line, he, along the wall that's being extended, do you have a, is there a gutter there, a metal gutter?
There is a gutter. Oh, not coming out, just the regular roof gutter.
Right.
Yeah.
And, um, where is that, that, just, uh, the only thing, you know, you're making a, one of the things you look at is if the, um, if the house is part of the setback, if it's close to the property line, you could conceivably be introducing water onto your neighbor's property by making that wall and roof larger.
Right.
Make a existing situation.
Worse for somebody, yeah.
Uh, so just kind of wondering, do you know how the, the drainage is gonna work? Is it, uh? Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. Sure, just, uh, just, uh, state your name and.
I'm James Green, I own share construction here in Toronto. Very nice for it ever. Under contractor, I would be extending the gutter line back around and extending the water towards the back, towards the rear yard onto their property.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be affecting anybody else. It wouldn't have flow, changed the flow of water in any direction. In fact, it would have anything would improve it.
Okay, so the, there's a leader going down on the back corner.
And then to be extended. Forty-five degrees back towards their property.
Okay, so it'll go straight back towards the backyard, not towards the neighbor's yard.
Towards their backyard.
Okay, that's, it, uh, does the neighboring property, is it slope downhill towards them or level?
Slows towards us, so the water would naturally flow more towards us anyway. Because I have to go uphill to our closest neighbor.
Okay.
Which is also why we wanted to get our washer dryer out of the basement.
There you go. Smart. Uh, does the board have any questions, concerns? Uh, anyone from, uh, the audience, just state your name and, uh?
Did I hear a, a motion to open a public hearing?
Yes, I'm sure. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I just got, uh, a motion to open the public hearing. I'm sorry, go ahead. Just state your name and address and.
Dorothy Dungara, I live at Sixty-Eight Weeks Avenue. I'm the neighbor and I own the house that's very close to them. So my concern, only concern, well, one concern is where you're gonna do this next to the garage, it's very close to my house. I hope, I, I don't hope, but you can't put a dumpster there.
I don't use a dumpster. I own a dumpster.
Well, just, that's my concern, because it would be on top of my house.
I'd already told them, I don't think, it's too smart to use a dumpster up there.
Right. And, and I think you addressed the water.
Yes, I did.
You know, because my house is close.
No, I.
I mean, that's my only thing. That's, that's why I'm here, because I already spoke to them.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd have to put it in writing, then I couldn't use a dumpster.
No, 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 I thought of that later after I spoke to Tyler, so.
It would be the same between an actressor that you would have.
It would be on top of my kitchen door.
Don't, don't operate like that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, say you operate it like that, I'm just bringing it over.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Questions? Okay. And the rest of the, that side of the house is not being affected. It's just the, the one addition, uh, the siding is just gonna match what's there, I would imagine. Roof line isn't changing.
Just extend.
Just extending. And the driveway isn't being altered at all. Okay. Add anything? Okay, uh, you know, again, we have to evaluate on the five criteria, so, uh, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or whether a detriment will be created to nearby properties by granting of the area variance. Uh, I think we, you know, considered the next door neighbor's property. Uh, it's, it, the existing non-conforming setback is not decreasing, it's mainly just being extended. So it, and it's towards the back, which is not being affected, the, the neighbors on that side. So it doesn't seem like, uh, a detriment is being created. We also looked at the roof line, whether it's, um, affecting any, any drainage issues. Uh, that does not seem to be the case. Uh, so that, um, I don't believe an undesirable change will be produced. Uh, number two is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Uh, I think you said that, um, one of your big ideas was to, uh, have it close to the garage. That's where the garage is. Uh, the only other possibility is to put it on the side, which would make the variance even smaller or the, uh, the setback even smaller. Uh, so that, um, it doesn't seem like there's an alternate method for that. Uh, whether the requested variance is substantial, uh, again, it's not making the existing setback smaller, uh, it's merely extending the existing condition. Uh, so I think it's safe to say that it's, uh, it's not substantial. Uh, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Again, we talked about the drainage, that's not, uh, being affected, uh, may even be improved by directing the water towards the, the back of the property away from the, the neighboring home. Uh, it's not, uh, affecting any sightlines, uh, around, uh, the area for, for the neighbor or for, uh, the public in the front of the building. Uh, and then whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, uh, it is self-created, uh, but in, uh, in comparison to the other factors, I think we choose to not place that much emphasis on that factor. Uh, so I would make a motion to approve the application. Second. Roll call?
Again, okay. Vote to approve.
Yay. Yay. And then need to.
Yep, uh, I'll just note for the minutes, uh, the county determined it was a matter of local concern and it's a type two under secret, so no secret review required.
Great.
Do your variances approve?
Okay. It's, come on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So before we get started on the next application, I just wanted to note that, um, we don't have county comments yet, so the board can't take action tonight.
Okay. County comments regarding, uh, whether we have, um, local.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, either that or town of Cornwall boundary.
But so you see Hudson Street is two eighteen.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, it's weird, it's saying the Crimson Town.
That means, uh, one of the board members asked.
It's, it's, I don't know which one it is, it's, it's either two eighteen or the, the town boundary. I just don't know in this case, I'll have to talk.
It's the two eighteen, it's not the town.
The other, there was another one where we had the letter from the state, the letter from the county that was proximity to the boundary.
Yeah.
Cause Weeks Avenue is very close to the.
Yeah.
Uh, it's funny, because it's on this one. Two seventeen, two nineteen Hudson. And it comes in on the town of Cornwall boundary.
Yeah, I saw that somewhere.
Uh, just, uh, so everyone knows what that means is, uh, any, any property that is within, I don't have the exact numbers, but, uh, within a certain distance from, uh, a state or county property, or I guess town as well, uh, we have to, um, propose the, send the application to the county and they have to, because it's, it's part of their concern as to what the outcome is, uh, they can either, uh, say that they want to take control of, uh, the decision, or they can leave it up to, uh, local authority. Uh, so that's usually just a review process and then they send a letter back to the board and once we have local, uh, authority, we can render a decision. Uh, so we don't have that, so we can't render a decision tonight, but we can, uh, uh, consider all the points and then, um, depending on the outcome, uh, from the county that we receive, we can render the decision at the next meeting.
The other thing I wanted to say too is I know there were a couple of letters from neighbors and, um, the application's a little bit different than what the board normally sees, so I just wanted to, um, make it clear that the board is not here to decide whether there should be a change of use from, uh, office to residential. Residential is a permitted use and it is a residential, uh, zoning district, so it's, you're strictly deciding on the variances.
Oh, I was wondering about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
And the variances are. But we can't decide on that. But we can't vote on that.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
We don't have authority to.
So there, yeah, so there's, so there isn't a, um.
Provisional. So it's not a matter of use.
No, no.
Yeah, right?
Uh, I should introduce the item first. Uh, this is two seventeen dash two nineteen Hudson Street, Sovak Office Conversion. Uh, the applicant seeks an area variance from section one, five-one-seven-two-dash-eight C one of the village zoning code to allow for a change of use from an office space, an apartment to a two-family dwelling. The applicants are seeking variances from section five-one-seven-two-dash-eight C one to allow for a lot area of eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight square feet when the code requires twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet. A lot width of sixty-eight feet when the code requires one hundred feet. A front yard setback of eight-point-one feet when the code requires thirty feet. A side yard setback of two-point-four feet when the code requires fifteen feet and a combined side yard setback of twenty-six-point-three-three feet when the code requires thirty-five feet. Okay. Uh, we received a couple of letters, uh, from, we have two letters, uh, received before the meeting, uh, I'm just gonna read them and introduce them to the record. Uh, this is from Brendan Coyne, uh, at thirteen Paula Court in Cornwall on Hudson, uh, dated February sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I write to express my opposition to the request for an area variance, change of use for the property at two-one-seven-two nineteen Hudson Street. The request seeks to change its use from office apartment to a two-family dwelling. I am concerned about how this would change, how this change would change on our main street. I believe it is healthy to maintain a mix of commercial and residential along Hudson Street. It is important to encourage businesses that provide goods and services to residents and visitors. Foot traffic creates a safe environment for all. Not long ago, the village lost a commercial location on Hudson Street next to Cornwall Presbyterian Church. A similar effort on the corner of Hudson and Cherry Street failed and resulted in a cleaners that provides a welcome service to our community. The village's comprehensive plan calls for supporting a strong main street. Let's not undermine nearly three years of work. I request that the zoning board of appeals reject this request. Uh, thank you for your efforts in maintaining our vibrant, attractive village. Sincerely, Brendan Coyne. The second letter is from J. Scott Terese of twenty-two Cherry Avenue in Cornwall on Hudson. Uh, this is dated, dated two, uh, February third, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I am writing to express my objection to the application for an area variance regarding the property located at two-one-seven-two nineteen on Hudson Street, which seeks to change its use from office and apartments to a two-family dwelling. As a resident of Cornwall on Hudson, I am deeply concerned about the impact this change would have on our village, particularly on the availability of commercial spaces within our main street district. Hudson Street serves as the backbone of our community, hosting a variety of local businesses that cater to the needs of our residents and visitors alike. These businesses are vital to our village's character, economy, and day-to-day lives of those who live here. The proposed change of use would not only remove valuable commercial space in an area where such spaces are already scarce, but all, but also set a concerning precedent for future development. The village's comprehensive plan clearly outlines a vision for maintaining and enhancing the vibrancy of our main street and business district. Allowing the conversion of mixed-use properties into purely residential ones goes against this vision, potentially leading to a diminishment of the commercial diversity and accessibility that our community values. Moreover, it may increase the pressure on the remaining commercial spaces, exacerbating rental rates and limiting opportunities for new and existing businesses to flourish. Furthermore, this transformation of this property could have a deleterious effect or deleterious impact on the village's aesthetic and social fabric. Hudson Street is more than just a thoroughfare. It is a place where people gather, shop, and engage in community life, diluting this mix of uses could undermine the pedestrian-friendly, vibrant street scene we are fortunate to have and aspire to enhance. In light of these considerations, I urge the appeals board to carefully review the application for the area variance with the village's long-term interests in mind. It is crucial that we adhere to our comprehensive plan and zoning code to protect the unique character and economic vitality of Cornwall on Hudson. I request, I respectfully request that the board deny the application for the change of use from office and apartments to a. of use from office and apartments to a two-family dwelling at two seventeen, two nineteen Hudson Street. Okay. Um, would the applicant like to um, just uh, approach the board and just introduce your application? Just state your, your name and address.
Uh, John Gannon, one fourteen Byron Court in Cornwall, resident here now for going on to forty-seven years.
I'm sorry, what was your name again, sir?
John Gannon.
Okay, and are you uh, are you the direct applicant or representing the applicant?
Representing my mother-in-law.
Okay.
Name Jerry Sovak. Jerry is uh, currently a widow and uh, this building is being used for her, well, you know, as far as uh, maintaining her lifestyle and so forth. And uh, we had an architect draw some beautiful plans to put together a, a nice-looking apartment, one, one bedroom apartment, and uh, we think it's gonna be something that's gonna be really appreciated, whoever the lucky tenants will be. And uh, you probably all have heard about uh, our esteemed governor, uh, Governor Hoshel even wanted to build uh, residence on local commu- uh, campuses here at, such as RCC and Orange County Community College for extra housing. There's a big push to do that. We're only doing a very small part on our part, you know, to have a residence available for something like that. We understood some of the comments that were made on the two letters and um, in that information, we are not basically changing anything environmental or anything like that uh, with the apartment. Uh, we still have that parking space in the rear of the, uh, the building itself. The front is gonna stay the same and we are basically surrounded by two and three-family houses all on Hudson Street. So this is really not anything different. The upstairs two floors, the second floor and the third floor is only one apartment and the first level that we're planning on converting from an office space to uh, an apartment will be the second for the, for the two family.
What's, what's currently there and what's been in there, how long has the property been owned by your brother-in-law?
Uh, it's over forty years now, I believe, right?
Yeah, I, they bought it, I think in the early eighties. I have been um, the office space for a soul psychiatrist for, I don't know, twenty-five years.
Yeah, a couple of decades at least.
Yeah, he uh, then passed away and then my law practice moved into the space during COVID. And it's, it's just too small of a space, you know, to house the practice after COVID and everybody, you know, everybody came back.
Yeah.
Um, we had looked at building and expanding the building itself. Um, and that process is, was gonna be twelve to fourteen months before we even got to put a shovel in the ground and it didn't make economic sense to do that. So my practice moved. This is my mother's income and we, you could certainly get more for residential rentals than, than you can for, for office space. You know, and what we're trying to do is, you know, minimal work that we can do so the building will stay exactly the same, parking will stay the same, rental will stay the same.
Look exactly the same on the outside, just that the inside will be nice and pretty.
Had the um, the space ever been residential prior to it being an office?
We think it was, um, but I, you know, I can't verify that. I think that the, um, the Bryans owned it, had it as a residential property. They then converted it sometime in the seventies to.
Into two.
Small office space, but there's certainly, there's certainly signs in the lower level that looked to me like there was a washer and dryer in there with a dryer vent, you know, on.
And a, and a shower stall, yeah, as well.
Uh, and just looking at the plan, I'm trying to, uh, any actual physical work you're gonna do on the building, it's all interior, you're just reconfiguring walls and it's all interior work, but the, the building, the footprint's not changing.
Exactly the same.
Getting doors or entrances, is anything gonna change on the exterior?
We have to add one window on the side of the building.
Yeah, for egress, yeah. Yeah, the architect had put that in and we had uh, agreed with that with, with Manny also. Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to, um, uh, the existing commercial space, I think we all can kind of know the, know the building.
Yes.
Uh, there's, the entrance is directly on the sidewalk on Hudson Street.
Yes.
Uh, is that going to change? I mean, I know it's, it's like a glass.
Everything will, everything will stay the, the same.
Is that going to be, I'm just trying to imagine, it's a, I mean, there's a, it's a glazed storefront area. Is that gonna be someone's living room? Right on the sidewalk?
Well, it'll, the, from the street level and everything like that, it'll stay the same, uh, you know, there may be new uh, blinds and things like that on the inside, you know, for privacy, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, and there's no additional doorways being added?
None.
I guess the, the uh, the circulation doesn't change, that areas, uh, that space is entered right there, the one upstairs is uh.
Their entrance.
And around the back, yeah, has their own private entrance and stairway there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and in terms of the rest of the property, is that being, is there any impact to that? It, it looks like you have uh, what, five, I guess those are public uh, parking spaces?
Plenty of parking back there, there's even uh, additional space behind the garage where people could park there also, but for a one-bedroom, you know, they probably won't have any children, I would guess, but who knows, you know?
Okay.
Maybe two cars at, at the most, so we still have a spare spot there for company that might come in.
Right, but if, there's no, uh, no changes being proposed as, as right now, as part of this application?
And it's been like that since the early nineteen hundreds, basically.
Garage is staying the same, it's not.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just sort of interested, um, just to clarify.
Mm-hmm.
What exactly the parameters of what we're considering here? These are all the, it's a non-conforming uh, lot.
Right.
Uh, and because there's a change of use?
Yeah, so the.
Being proposed, it triggers all the existing variants.
Exactly, yeah.
Existing non-conformities.
Not that we can vote tonight, but if we hypothetically were to not approve the variances, what happens to the property?
Um, I guess that the, the status quo would be maintained, uh, could still be residential, but um, the building itself is pre-existing, so nothing would change there.
If you, if we don't approve all the variances, it can't, use can't change, does that be correct?
Yeah.
Right, it would have to stay, I mean.
The variances currently.
Existing use would have to stay the same.
Yeah.
I'd like to add to that, if I may, that um, in our research, we took quite a few hours to, to go through, this is on page four of our uh, report that we had put together for you. We have like sixteen or seventeen other dwellings that are either greater in terms of space or less than and, you know, some place, some places they're, you know, right close together, like the previous applicant that was here, but nothing has changed.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to reiterate my earlier point again, um, you're not deciding on whether the use should change or not because it's a, they're both permitted uses in the zoning district, so uh, by right, the applicant can change from office to residential.
Okay, so that's not being considered, it's only whether the.
The building.
Existing non-conformities are appropriate for a purely residential.
Exactly, yep.
Once it goes to residential, it triggers all these.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Right. Um, okay. Do you have any issues like to discuss? Okay. Okay, uh, make a motion to uh, open the public hearing?
Second.
Uh, if anyone from the audience would like to uh, speak, just uh, just state your name, name and address, please?
Hi, Doug Land and uh, we own several properties in the village, but we're directly across the street at two oh eight and two twelve Hudson Street. Kind of terms of research, when we bought, excuse me, when we bought two twelve, we did look and essentially all the properties on that area were originally commercial or office on the first floor and residential upstairs. Again, two twelve was uh, again, we saw some early pictures, so that was, that's how all those were built, that's why the office, you know, spaces down there, again, and they went back and forth over the years when there was no zoning or where there was kind of pretty wide-open zoning. In general, I kind of understand the economics of why residential's pretty attractive now, but I actually, having spent a lot of money developing the commercial space at two oh eight Hudson Street and my wife runs a dance and yoga studio there and we have office space there, um, I really do think that there is an advantage to having mixed use. This is the central business district, it's the CBS, I mean, that, that is the overlay, as your counsel pointed out, it's a residential district with a commercial overlay and the commercial overlay is there for a reason. It's there because the town believed and the comprehensive plan believes that there is an advantage to having mixed use in the central business district, that's why they call it the central business district. So I guess my, my general view is that it would be advantageous to encourage people that own properties that are adaptable or used as some kind of commercial would maintain that use. And again, I understand what your counsel said, but clearly you need, and I went through this, you need the variance in order to change the use, so i- i- you can say you're not deciding on the use, but essentially you are, cause if you don't give the variance, it has to exist. Again, I went through that with, with my building, so twenty years ago. So.
Just to be clear on that point though, I mean, if the applicant wanted to, they could tear down the existing building and put up a new residential building that meets the setbacks without any kind of approval.
That meets the setbacks?
Yeah.
Yeah, would have to meet the setbacks.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but it, but the whole point of this is, it would, to meet the current setbacks would be a much smaller footprint than what's existing there now.
Sure, but they, they don't necessarily need any approval to change the use.
Right, absolutely. No, say again, we had the same thing with two twelve, we could've torn it down and, but again, just the way it's set up. Anyway, again, I have mixed feelings, I totally understand that there's a, right now there is a pretty good market for residential, so there's a kind of economic, oh, it would be great to change it. In general, again, I guess it, as Scott said in his letter, it does set some precedent and, you know, I guess I would hope that I wouldn't be coming back here in a year or two and saying, well, I'm just gonna, I want, I wanna take and change all my office and commercial space to residential too. I just think that there is a, an issue what the fabric of the community is. And having watched the building next to the church go from commercial to residential, you notice it, you, you know, cause I'm on, I'm there every day and you definitely notice that it changes, even when the antique store uh, changed, you know, they wanted to change that to completely residential and I think fifteen years ago, the board said, no, you need to keep that as a storefront and it's nice having the dry cleaner there, at least that, you know, there's some sense of at least a little bit of flow in the, in the commercial district. I say, I'm not here to say I rapidly oppose this, I understand the economics and why the applicant would wanna do it, but I think it, it's more than just, oh, well, let's just change another building from commercial to residential, sooner or later you're gonna have no residential in the village at all if you keep going down this direction. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to uh, provide an opinion? Right, um.
I would just like to add one thing here.
If you could just state your name.
Stephanie Sovak, I, my mother owns the building. Um, I understand Mr. Land's point here, um, but if the village of Cornwall and Hudson really wants to build a commercial center or a commercial avenue here in the village, they need to be more welcoming to businesses. I moved my business out of there because it was gonna take twelve to fourteen months to expand the business there. It's not viable to do that, so if that's the village plan, then you have to make it, you have to do something then that welcomes the businesses instead of putting roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. I, you, you know, I would, I would have loved to have stayed, but there's not enough space, there's just not enough space to do it. So, um, I, I.
I agree with you.
I get your point, but the, these processes are too long, they're too cumbersome, they're too expensive, and if this is the goal, then you gotta, you gotta, and I know it's not you guys, cause you, but I, you, you know, and to hold my poor mother accountable because the village doesn't, you know, develop a program to incent businesses to move there, I think is unfair to a little eighty-eight-year-old lady who needs, you know, the income for her retirement. There are, the place is loaded with two families, three families, single families, there's a single family to the right, there's a two-family to, you know, to the left, there's all residential on the other side, so to single out this particular property because of a use issue, I think is, is, is not right.
Issues? See?
Got my answers.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say personally, for me, the, the biggest issue would be, I mean, naturally, it's for a public space, being the proximity or the setback uh, to the sidewalk. As a public thoroughfare, pedestrian thoroughfare, you know, one of the, uh, one of the qualities about being a commercial space is that it's, you know, at least theoretically, it's, it's a semi-public space, you can, you walk along the sidewalk, you can walk uh, into uh, that it's a, as a business, um, it's sort of, um, what makes a public space sort of expandable beyond just the sidewalk in a way to get from point A to point B. When that becomes a residential space, uh, it becomes, you know, you got, sort of have this collision between the public and the private and uh, that becomes like sort of an impermeable barrier, it's, you know, it's why uh, as a, just a conventional area, you generally have houses set back slightly from the sidewalk in the public area, just as a kind of a mediation zone between those two different areas. You know, so for me, that's kind of uh, the main area where that becomes a, a sort of a collision and would, you know, kind of maybe possibly degrade the, the public streetscape uh, along Hudson Street. As for the rest of the property and those setbacks, I think, you know, it operates pretty conventionally if it were a residence, um, as to the rest of the, the properties uh, in the denser areas of, of the village. Anyone else have any issues with the rear, side? Nope. Okay.
Unfortunately, you can't vote tonight, but you do have the option to close the public hearing or keep it open until the next meeting?
Uh, I think we, we should keep it open. Yeah, I think we'll, we'll keep it open, uh, unfortunately, like we.
Is there a, a motion to uh?
A motion to keep the uh, public comment open. And just state uh, for the record, uh, that we explained earlier, um, that we're not able to vote, uh, not to render a decision tonight, uh, because we haven't received local jurisdiction from the county planning office. So they've received the, they have received the application.
Yep, I think uh, they received it. Yeah, I think they received it January 30. So they have 30 days to respond or not. And once 30 days passes, then the board can take action regardless.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we're not able to to hold a vote this evening. It'll have to be tabled for, well, depending upon the the decision by the county. If they grant local jurisdiction, then we can hold a vote in the next the next meeting. And you'll have opportunity to to restate or your case for the application again. Apologize for that.
It'll come through the building department, so the ZBA clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess motion to, or my motion.
I think you have some minutes to approve as well.
Do you have to close this or?
Nope, so you kept the public hearing open. So before you close the meeting, just have the minutes.
Okay. I want to look for the agenda. The agenda.
Move to approve the minutes from...
We'll be here forever.
October 12.
Motion to approve the, are you dinner?
Yeah. I agree.
Okay.
Any other couple of things you do need us to fill these out?
I guess so.
Here's two. What do we have to do with these? Just approve them?
Yeah.
You have to vote to approve these to the meetings.
Okay. Since we haven't voted to approve, should we move the date? I had it before. Okay, motion to approve the 2024 zoning board meeting dates.
Second.
Approved. Okay. And Rob, do you want this? Is this going to the building department or to you?
I think it's going to the building department, but I can leave it here and, you know, don't pick it up. Or it could be for clerk.
Motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Desperate man.
So we both know they cannot change the use, so we are voting on the use.
Right.